Twenty twenty five at nine AM. Members Witherspoon, Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, and Trup.
Good morning, everyone. I would like you to stand for pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
Mr. President.
Yes.
If we could give a moment of silence for our firefighters. It's the month to be aware of PTSD. And our firefighters, not all wounds, as we all know, for everything, are on the outside. We have wounds on the inside that we deal with daily. But it's the firefighters PTSD month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May twenty first, twenty twenty five city council meeting and bills for payment on June fifth and twelfth, twenty twenty five. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Trup, and Witherspoon.
I believe we have a presentation this morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'm just here to introduce Tara Hoffrich, who is one of our consultants with Kittleson and Associates. In two thousand and twenty three, the city of Erie received a $two hundred thousand federal grant through the Department of Transportation's Safe Streets and Roads for All program to create a plan aimed at making local roads safer for everyone, drivers, pedestrians, cyclists, transit riders alike. For the past year, the city of Erie has worked closely with our consultants Kittleson and Associates to shape a comprehensive safety action plan that reflects community needs and priorities. With the planning phase complete, we are now immediately preparing to transition into the implementation phase. This phase includes involves applying for an implementation grant through the Department of Transportation to fund infrastructure improvements, such as pedestrian safety enhancements, traffic calming measures, and safe routes to schools. Eligibility requires both the formal adoption of a comprehensive safety action plan and evidence of project implementation readiness. Here to present to the finalized plan for your review is Tara Hoffrich. And Tara, I hope you can hear us. I'm going to pass the mic over to you.
Yes, I can hear you all. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I will share my screen here. Okay, you all can hear me, right? I'm going to dig into it. Okay, so as Jackie mentioned, my name is Tara Hoffrich. I'm a senior planner with Kittleson and Associates, and we worked with the city to develop the comprehensive safety action plan, which is part of the Safe Streets and Roads for All grant program. And so I'm going to give you an overview of that plan today. I will give you a plan overview, talk about what we did, what the purpose was, things like that. I'll talk a little bit about the vision for the plan and the community engagement that was conducted. I'll give a brief overview of the crash analysis results that are outlined in the plan, our recommendations, and then a little bit about next steps in implementing the plan. So to begin with the plan overview, why did the city of Erie develop a comprehensive safety action plan? From two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty three, there were thirty four traffic fatalities resulting from crashes within the city of Erie. During that time, there were also one hundred and sixty six suspected severe injury crashes. And these are types of crashes that would impact the way somebody lives their life, maybe affects their ability to work or take care of their families. These are very severe injuries. And during that time, that five-year period, there were over five thousand six hundred total crashes within the city of Erie. And so, of course, the purpose of this plan is to focus on transportation safety and reducing these severe crashes occurring in the city. The Safe Streets and Roads for All grant program, which Jackie mentioned, was created by the Infrastructure, Investment, and Jobs Act and the bipartisan infrastructure law. It is a federal grant program that local governments, like the city of Erie, can apply directly to for transportation funding. It is a $five billion program over the course of five years. And like Jackie mentioned, there's kind of two types of grants. One is a planning grant, and that's what the city has been awarded a $two hundred thousand SSRA planning grant from the US DOT to develop the safety action plan. And then, once you have a safety action plan, you can apply for implementation funding money, which also comes out of this grant program. This slide shows the steps that were taken to carry out this plan. So we did data collection analysis, mostly focused on crash data, which, again, I'll dig into a little bit later. Also, some demographic data, things like that, to paint a picture of existing conditions related to transportation safety in the city of Erie. We then did some public engagement to hear from people about their lived experiences and find out kind of where the gaps are in data, where are people feeling less safe traveling in Erie, where are people feeling the streets are already kind of what they want them to be. So we identified areas of need, and we identified, too, how we could prioritize transportation safety in the city. So where are the most severe crashes happening most frequently? We developed actions and strategies to address those safety concerns, and I'll go into those in more detail later as well. And then we went back to the public to find out people's reactions to those recommendations, you know, how they might apply in the context of Erie. Are they addressing kind of the expectations that people have? And then lastly, we developed a final plan, which you all are now getting to review and we're presenting about today. So vision and engagement. This safety action plan was developed based on the safe system approach and in pursuit of the mission of Vision Zero. So one key aspect here is that the focus is on reducing and ultimately eliminating fatal and suspected serious injury crashes. So we're not necessarily trying to tackle all crashes. The big focus is on the most severe crashes. And Vision Zero is a little bit different from traditional thinking about traffic safety because the premise is that traffic deaths are preventable rather than inevitable. It's also a matter of thinking about the entire transportation safety system. So it's not just about changing people's behaviors, although that's maybe a piece of it. It's also about the infrastructure that is kind of redundant if people do make mistakes or make bad decisions. It's about safer vehicles, emergency response times, kind of all of those pieces fit together to contribute to eliminating fatal and serious crashes. Overall, the Vision Zero approach is more proactive, more integrated, multi-disciplinary, and systemic. And the city of Erie has committed to achieving Vision Zero, so no fatalities, no severe injury crashes by two thousand and thirty five. To begin, we set up a safety working group. This is an interdisciplinary team of agency staff and community leaders in the region that came together to really guide the development of the plan. We met four times during the plan development and established an environment of collaboration and accountability. And then this is a group that could be continued to be leveraged in the future in implementing the plan. And so you can see this list of organizations and individuals here, people from different departments at the city, advocacy groups, emergency services, nonprofits, the county, PennDOT, Parking Authority, Transit Authority, public schools. There was a really great cross-section of different perspectives in the room at critical points throughout the plan development. In terms of public engagement, we really structured it around two main phases. The first phase was focused on introducing the plan, telling people about what we were doing and why, sharing the safety data results that we found, and then seeking people's lived experiences, kind of that qualitative component of this, about where people feel safe or unsafe traveling in Erie. So that phase of engagement included an online survey, and we received five hundred and seventy responses to the survey. So it was a great turnout. There was an online story map in which people could, there was an interactive map on the online kind of website thing where people could point points where they think we should be investing in transportation safety or where they already feel like safe walking or biking or driving in the city. There was also a public workshop back in September of two thousand and twenty four where about fifty people came out, and there was great conversation about transportation safety and where we should be investing money. And then, lastly, the city staff also did some additional community meetings, going to specific neighborhoods and organizations to continue to engage with people on this topic. The second phase of engagement was more focused on the recommendations. So we came to people with some ideas about how we think we could address safety in the city of Erie, transportation safety, and got input and whether this is the right context for these types of ideas. And so we updated the online story map. We had another public workshop back in January, and we followed that up on the survey as well since it was a pretty cold snowy day in January. And then, again, the city continued to engage with people at schools and community centers and things like that as well. With that, I will give a quick overview of the crash data analysis results to give you a little bit more context. We analyzed crash data from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty three, so a five-year period. During that time, total crashes in the city of Erie were fluctuating, but severe crashes, so again, the ones that caused fatal and severe injuries, were tending to trend upward during that five-year period. The most common crash types in Erie are angle crashes, rear end and hit fixed object crashes, which is when a car, you know, drives off the road and hits like a utility pole or a tree or something like that. There are higher crash frequencies over the summer on Fridays and in the evening peak hour, which is fairly consistent with trends we've seen in other cities. Also consistent is that speeding crashes and dark condition crashes are disproportionately severe in the city of Erie. And this is, again, somewhat expected because we know that speed is a factor that affects severe crash outcomes. This graphic does a good job of explaining that. Basically, it's showing that a driver going twenty miles per hour has a thirteen percent likelihood of killing or severely injuring a pedestrian if they were to hit them. If that driver goes thirty miles per hour, that likelihood jumps up to forty percent. And if the driver's going forty miles per hour, that likelihood jumps up to seventy three percent. So that speed is a huge factor in the severity of the outcome. We also took a look at pedestrian and bicyclist crashes. And in both cases, these graphs are showing trends from over a ten-year period from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty three. In both cases, those crashes have been trending upward. Fewer bicycle crashes overall as compared to pedestrian crashes. And then there was a really big spike in pedestrian crashes, severe, especially severe outcomes in two thousand and twenty three. So with that, I will jump into the recommendations. Again, just giving a very high-level perspective on all of this for now. There were three kind of buckets or categories of recommendations that we made as part of this plan. The first was a set of spot-specific recommendations along key severe crash corridors and intersections. So we identified the spots that were experiencing the most frequent, most severe crashes and made very specific recommendations along those spots. We also did systemic safety analysis to identify trends and patterns throughout the whole city and then made recommendations about how the city could implement kind of like the same treatment at different intersections or different street segments throughout the city to address crash patterns. And then, thirdly, we came up with non-infrastructure recommendations, such as education, enforcement policies, and programs. So I'll give a little bit more detail on each of these. The first thing we did was develop a toolkit. So this is included in the plan. It includes infrastructure and non-infrastructure solutions. You'll see there's a title and an image and a description for each one. There's also a high-level assessment of cost and of safety benefit. And most of these tools are proven safety countermeasures, which is a term used by the Federal Highway Administration to indicate tools that have a proven record of reducing severe crashes. So the first thing we did was take this toolkit and apply it along those specific corridors. So this map shows the high crash corridors that we focused on. So shown in this blue color here are the corridors in the city with the highest frequency of severe crash outcomes. So that includes Twenty Sixth Street, Broad, and Buffalo, Eighteenth Street, Twelfth Street, Sixth Street, and East Lake Road, and then State Street, Parade Street. And we also added in Eighth Street, which actually didn't pop from a data standpoint, but it came up a lot in community engagement. So we felt like it was worth including that one in this kind of high priority list as well. So again, we made specific recommendations for each of these corridors, which is included in the plan. And then we also highlighted in yellow circles here the intersections that pop as having higher frequency of severe crashes. Some of those fall on the high crash corridors, and some do not. And so, again, some we've made specific recommendations for, and a few would still need a little bit of further study to understand exactly what was happening with those crashes and what the treatment should be as a result. And then the last thing shown on this map in this like pink color are the vulnerable road user, high-risk areas. So a vulnerable road user is often considered a pedestrian or a bicyclist, somebody that is more vulnerable to a severe crash outcome. And PennDOT did a statewide study to identify areas throughout the whole state where we should be investing in bicyclists' pedestrian safety infrastructure. And these are the spots in Erie that popped. And so you can see they mostly overlap with these high-risk corridors that we identified, except for this one on State Street, where the city has already explored some solutions there. So I'm not going to go over every specific recommendation, but those are in the plan for each of those corridors. I will touch a little bit on the systemic safety recommendations that we made. So again, this was an exercise to understand what are the patterns happening across the city and how can we use specific tools to address those patterns? So one was angle crashes, and they're happening particularly at signalized intersections. And we found that they're especially happening where there are no marked crosswalks, close to liquor stores and bars and in commercial areas. So it'd be important to address these crashes in these locations first. And the types of tools that would be applicable might be striping high-visibility crosswalks or modifying signal timing, among other things. Another overrepresented crash type was hit pedestrians, again, specifically at signalized intersections and especially close to parks, liquor stores, bars, and in commercial areas. Some proven tools to address that would be intersection daylighting, which is a process of marking out the parking spaces that are close to an intersection so that you have better visibility of the pedestrian as they're walking across or waiting to cross the street. Curve extensions do something similar, but with more kind of concrete, so bumping out the sidewalk curve around the intersection to make the pedestrian more visible and shorten their crossing distance. And then leading pedestrian intervals is a signal intervention, which basically gives the pedestrian the chance to walk first so that they're already like very visible in the crosswalk before a vehicle is given the chance to start making their movement. And lastly, the other overrepresented crash type that we looked into was run-off-the-road crashes. So again, this is a vehicle running off the road and hitting a fixed object typically. We saw that most often, the collisions were involving utility poles and that there was a special pattern of this occurring at night and on curves. Some proven tools for that would be adding street center lines, striping street edge lines, posting more speed limit signs, and installing traffic calming. And again, the idea is that maybe we could take some of these tools and apply them throughout the city. One method for prioritizing these systemic safety improvements, first is to address the high crash locations first. This map shows the sixteen percent of streets in Erie that account for eighty percent of all of the fatal and severe injury crashes. So these are kind of the streets and intersections that you want to address first. And from there, the city could prioritize based on context or like land use, so close to parks or schools, equity factors, and community input, so basically where you're curating the most concerns. And lastly, I will outline the non-infrastructure solutions. So starting with education, we recommended enhancing driver education, enhancing education and outreach with children and teenagers, doing more pedestrian and bicycle safety education programs, and doing some sort of transportation safety media campaigns. Regarding enforcement, we recommend enhancing enforcement operations, especially as it related to speeding, reckless driving, and those types of violations, adjusting street speed limits and providing additional enforcement resources. Regarding policies, we recommended that the city finalize its complete streets policy, that the city establish a capital funding program. You could enhance development requirements and incentives and enhance street maintenance operations. And then, lastly, regarding programs, we recommended implementing a neighborhood traffic calming program, enhancing and expanding the Safe Streets for School program. And we heard a lot from the community, a lot of support for that recommendation. And then, lastly, conducting more road safety audits. And we also recommend implementing the active Erie transportation plan and the recommendations that are in that. Okay, with that, I will just touch upon implementing the plan, and then we'll open it to questions. So we included in the plan a matrix, an implementation matrix, which includes all of the possible projects. And then it includes a planning level cost estimate for each one, a number of different funding buckets that could be applicable, who we think the implementers and collaborators might need to be to implement at that project, and then a relative priority level and phasing timeline. And we did something similar for the non-infrastructure solutions as well, just a little bit of a higher level opinion of cost, but different funding sources, different implementers and collaborators, and then, again, some sort of priority level and phasing timeline relatively. And as Jackie mentioned, this is all especially critical because the city is preparing an application for Safe Streets and Roads for All implementation funding. So again, now that they've done the safety action plan, the next step is to get implementation funding from the same grant program to implement these projects. And that is due on June twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five. The city can leverage existing funding commitments as the required twenty percent match. And as mentioned, the safety action plan must be adopted and published before the grant due date of June twenty sixth to be eligible for that funding. After that, the city, PennDOT, and other parties would be able to continue to look for other funding sources. And again, we've listed those in the implementation matrix. So there's a lot of different ways that we can fund these projects. And we imagine that the Safety Working Group or some subset of it would continue to be regularly a part of monitoring progress in implementing the plan in the years to come. And with that, I think that's everything. I'm open to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you, Tara. Thank you for that great presentation. I just want to make one comment. This data that Tara's presenting is primarily from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty three. To put it into perspective, last year, we had twelve fatalities in the city of Erie. Seven of them were vehicular, and five of them were pedestrian. Four of those were on Twelfth Street. So as I presented with the woman a couple of months ago who lost a child to a vehicular accident, the child was on a, it was an adult, special needs child, who was on a bicycle. One life is too many. And so this is critical for the city to adopt this plan and move quickly into implementation money. I mean, we don't have that opportunity very often, and this money is still available to us at the federal level. So we're open to answer any questions. Leanne is here from Public Works. Planning and Public Works worked very closely together. It was a very good partnership, understanding the planning. And obviously, through Public Works would be the implementation of this grant. So on the infrastructure side of it. So do you have any questions regarding the plan? I know you received it in advance and were able to look at it, but we're open to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel?
Yeah, I have a question. With the news coming out last week of the Bayfront Highway potentially closing, is that being factored into any of this decision as far as what the traffic flow on Twelfth Street would be, given that that would be the spot that we'd be trying to restrict traffic the most?
Please come to the mic. Give us your name, please.
Leanne Parmenter, city engineer. We're currently working with PennDOT to work on the signal timing again with the different volumes we'll have. And we're trying to get an adaptive system. We're also looking at signal modifications on Eighth Street and other areas that might be impacted, like Sixth Street, Holland Street, all of those right now.
And just to note, this plan focuses on fatalities and serious injuries. That's where the focus lies. I mean, you know, there are so many other things to talk about in terms of flow, crossings, you know, pains, but this is specifically for those critical needs.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. As somebody who, I work with individuals with intellectual disabilities, and then I've worked with the elderly and the disabled. And I appreciate the efforts we're working towards making our streets safer for those who are not in vehicles because sometimes I find that us vehicle drivers can be a little aggressive. We can be in a bit of a hurry, and we're not as patient as we should be for some of the people who might need a little bit more time. And with us going into summer months, it getting darker, people wearing dark clothing, I have seen the increase of fatalities over the last few years. And as a result of that, I'm really concerned for our elderly and our disabled community members, the ones who use medical equipment, who have to cross streets, who try to get across a street and then the turn, the left turn signal, well, no, the right-hand turners are just shooting through. So anything that we can do to adjust the times as well after surveying would be appreciated because I do see people rushing to try to get across. And that's concerning as well because when you're in a vehicle, you have time to be patient, but sometimes we forget that. So any efforts are appreciated.
I was just going to mention that that comes more out of the systemic change of looking at lighting, timing, signalization throughout the city of Erie. So that is addressed in this plan.
I definitely want this to pass. So this would be on the agenda for our next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from counsel? Hey, we thank you very much for the presentation, and we will act accordingly.
Thanks, Tara.
Do we have any repository sales? Please. Do we have any repository sales? Do we have any repository sales? Hearing none? We're moved to citizens to be heard. Please give us your name and municipality, and you will have five minutes to speak to us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
That's quite a presentation. I certainly can identify with the part of pedestrians.
Could we have your name, please?
I'm sorry, David French. I live in downtown Erie. Spent a lot of time in downtown Erie walking. The trouble spot for me is the tenth estate, quite frankly. There's signs that were the icon of a person for pedestrian to walk does not guarantee you aren't going to be given safe passes. I had, I actually hit a car with my cane. They were that close to me. Didn't do any damage, it's all rubber. But at any point is, there's people crashing down red lights down State Street constantly. They're not putting on the brake, they're putting on the gas. And I just don't want to see anybody else get hurt. I don't want to get hurt. And I'll leave it at that. But this is going to be my last meeting for quite some time. On a personal note, I'm proud to say that I'm be going, going to be going to Maria House, which is a drug and alcohol facility south of Corey, founded by Father Peterson about fifty years ago. I admit that for my entire adult life, I've had situations with drug and alcohol problems. I've had some mental health issues. I don't like to blame anything on me just making bad decisions. But I'm going to be seventy-three years old on Saturday. But I'm going to be 73 years old on Saturday, and I'm looking for another quarter of my life to be productive and sober. And I hope you all can pray for me on that. Thank you.
Best of luck. Yes.
Thank you, and God bless you, and happy early birthday.
Roll Ramblers.
Amen. Okay, are there any other citizens to be heard?
Hello, my name is Jonas Laird. And this is my story. On June 16, 2023, I was waiting for the light to change to green to go to straight on State Street in my wheelchair at 10:12 PM on the southwest corner of 14th and State Street in downtown Erie. And there was a white car waiting at the northeast corner, waiting to make a left-hand turn going south on State Street. I did what I always do. I waited, and I saw the white car who hit me blink its lights, or so I thought. I thought they did that because he acknowledged and saw me and go because it was dark and raining that night. But I was mistaken. Within seconds, I was laying in the middle of State Street, knocked out of my wheelchair, and laying in the middle of the dark, wet, hard ground. And my wheelchair was nearly a block away from me. My wheelchair is now demolished, and my pain is unbearable. I was so hopeful that the person who hit me would be held accountable, and I was going to get justice. But that didn't happen either. I was shown what I'm always shown, and that is no one cares about me or what happened to me. All the news stations either didn't return my calls and emails or refused to post my case unless I went there and I was on camera. And that wasn't possible given my circumstances. The city police, district magistrate, traffic investigators, and all the politicians I've reached out to, including the governor, all refused to help. And I contacted all local lawyers, and that didn't go anywhere either. It left me with both physical and mental trauma, like PTSD and severe pelvis pain from the car knocking me out of my wheelchair and running me over, running over my pelvis, as you can all see in the pictures. I nearly lost my life to suicide because this pain is unbearable, to the point where I'm on long-term narcotics from it, and I don't want to be. A 32-year-old like myself shouldn't have a reason to, but not in my case. I have sharp, stabbing, twisting, shifting, dull, achy pain 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days of the year, and it's truly unbearable. I can't take a quick shower without crying, grab a drink without crying, or even watch TV sitting down. My PTSD has somewhat improved, but it still makes me go into hysterics when it's triggered. And it still comes out of nightmares. However, the driver of that white car is still out there. And I don't know if this person wants me dead or not. And it's going to finish, and it's going to finish the job this time. I shouldn't have to live like this, especially when it wasn't even my fault. I would say check the camera that the police claim doesn't work. And it was right where two state federal buildings, and technically three if you want to be picky. They wouldn't even try looking at them. I could have, and I still can die, either when I got hit and ran over or from suicide from mental and physical health or from respiratory failure I was just diagnosed with before this happened. I will not be quiet anymore, because I need justice like everyone else. So I want to propose that this be somewhat settled quietly. And I request $7,000 for the pain and suffering this cost me. Because this was very hard on me for the pain and suffering I endured still, two years later.
Thank you very much. On behalf of all the council, we're very sad to hear what has happened to you. And we all pray that your recovery is fast. Is there anything else? Okay. No, thank you, sir.
Any more citizens to be heard? Okay, ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 16529. Official File Ordinance 402025, An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Codified Ordinances of the City of Erie, namely Article 354 Rental Housing, Specifically to amend Section 35405A that establishes the rights and obligations of the owners and occupants of rental housing in the city of Erie, in particular the rights under federal, state, and local laws that apply to the landlord-tenant relationship. Sponsored by Councilmember Flores, seconded by Councilmember Schoff, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16529, and now known as Official File Ordinance 402025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 402025, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16530. Official Ordinance 412025, An Ordinance Amending Article 131 Bureau of Fire to add sections that amend the duties and/or responsibilities of the Office of Chief Fire Marshal and Fire Marshal to improve the safety of buildings throughout the city, to prevent fires or fire hazards throughout the city, and to permit the issuance of citations and/or enforcement of traffic laws in specific circumstances. Sponsored by Councilmember Schoff, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16530, and now known as Official File Ordinance 412025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 412025, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Number one, Council File Number 16531 has been pulled by the sponsor, and also number two under New Business. So moving on to Council File Number 16532, An Ordinance Appropriating a Sum of $1,97,563 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the expenditure thereof from the City of Erie ARP Fund Interest and will be used to fund the Capital Improvement Fund. Sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the Council File Ordinance Number 16532 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16532 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16533, An Ordinance Appropriating a Sum of $18,417.06 of Program Income Generated Through the Community Development Block Grant for the Following CDBG CD23 Projects. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Ordinance Number 16533 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16533 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council President, this takes us to New Business. And again, number two has been pulled by the sponsor.
Motion to move the balance.
It's been moved second. Are there any separations?
Good call. Any separations? Moving the balance of the agenda. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. This takes us to committee reports.
Okay, we'll start on my far left, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank David and Jonas for coming up and speaking today. It takes a lot of courage to share very personal things with other people. Thank you for everyone who comes up to speak to us. So my committee report is as follows. On May 22, I attended the Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships Meeting with Mo Troop. And as always, those meetings are very emotional, fruitful. And I get a lot out of it when I attend those meetings. Then after that, I attended the Erie City Mission fundraiser that was at the Warner Theater to raise money for a new building that they are going to build for women's housing. They announced that that evening, and it was a lovely musical night. I attended three Memorial Day services, one at Wesleyville, one at the Soldiers and Sailors Home, and one at Veterans Memorial Park here in Erie. Because of my family history with past and present people in the service, I am thankful for everyone who goes above and beyond their commitment of civic duty to serve our country. I listened to the Environmental Advisory Council Meeting on Wednesday, May 28 at 3 o'clock. And Craig Palmer from this, our CEO at Erie Water spoke about the availability of trying to get water for events where people won't have to buy plastic water bottles. It is costly. And I really am thankful for the people who work on this environmental council board, because they are really pushing certain environmental issues. And Craig addressed these, as did Dr. Sam Mason, who was present, and Sister Pat Lupo. They all spoke as well, and some other people as well. So I'm very thankful for that. Today, there's a midday art break from noon to 1 PM at the Erie Art Museum. I think everybody needs a break, and music is my specialty. So hopefully, I will be there. The police had 1,426 calls, which is a high pice of the year. I'm not going to go into details about all of their calls other than to say there were 134 domestics, which continue to concern me, that we need help in our families with dealing with confrontations and counseling issues. And there were 67 traffic concerns. The Erie Historic Preservation had their meeting, and I was listening to it online as I was traveling, but didn't listen to the entirety because of in and out with issues. But I did go to Wilmington, North Carolina for a wedding. And I tried to take as many pictures and things as I can. And what my husband and I did this, we did not travel by plane or go the routes that are the major highways. So from Erie to Wilmington, North Carolina, going down and back, we traveled the alternate roads, which are very interesting. I highly recommend it if you have time, because you get to see Americana at its finest. And many of the cities that we went through honored their service people by those flags that you see, where people who have family members pay for the flag, and it goes up. We also saw that with high school kids graduating as well, as well as different churches, and lots of skunks and deer on the roads, which was sad. But we attended the Erie Ale Works fundraiser for the Erie Humane Society, and that's always a fun event. And there might be a COG meeting today at 1:30. So thank you very much. This is definitely summer today. So we all need to be aware of our safety, especially on the sidewalks. If there are electric bicycles and scooters and things, please, please, please be aware. And I hope, I'm thankful for Tara Hoffaroff, who presented today. I certainly believe that that should pass for all of our safety, for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Troop?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things. I want to echo Councilwoman Schoff's words about the two young, two gentlemen that spoke today. It was very touching to hear their stories. Also, I'm not sure if you're all aware of it. A school is out on Friday. It's the last physical day students will be in school. So just to make everybody aware of that, just want to say thank you to all of our educators, public, private, home, school, for what you do. Say thank you for Mr. Brian Polito for all he did for our city, and then our new superintendent, Dr. Nadeline Gibbs. I'd like to wish her luck and success. And congrats to all the graduates. And thanks to all the educators especially. It's not an easy job to show up every day in a school building. It's definitely not an easy job. And then lastly, if you don't know, Erie Juneteenth Festival will be June 14 at Perry Square. I believe it'll start at 11:00 AM, go to 8:00 PM. That's organized by Angela Ullmknair and I think Erie's Black Wall Street, and the city of Erie, and a lot of other different people who helped with that. Some people probably wonder what Juneteenth, why people celebrate it. So Juneteenth commemorates June 19, 1865. That was the day enslaved people in Texas were informed of their freedom nearly two years after the Emancipation Proclamation. This event sparked celebrations and became a tradition, marking the end of slavery in Texas and a symbolic beginning of true freedom for Black Americans in the country. So I just wanted to put that out there for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Ed Brzezinski.
Thank you, sir. I speak often of collaboration, having people working together and making things happen. Sometimes good things happen because of bad things. Everybody in this city, probably in this state by now, knows that I am vehemently against these ridiculous bike paths. But what it did do is it made a neighborhood aware of things that were going on. Two signs went up on 35th and Green Garden. I received a number of calls because the folks didn't know what they were. And guess what? Our police didn't know what it was, Public Works didn't know. We found out much later. In fact, I even talked to PennDOT to see if they were putting something up. Turned out it was a school district. Mr. Brockman decided to put up cameras to check walking traffic for the kids from Grover, Cleveland, which is a great thing. But tell us, tell the people, you know, think about the stuff that's been going on. Again, I go with the bike paths, people on Prairie Street didn't know what happened to them until they saw the lines down. We can't have that. Maybe this American Safety Plan will take a good look at the streets and realize that this bike plan right now is going to be a real negative to safe traffic. For years, bicycles and automobiles lived together on highways. We don't have the room for bike paths. It causes more confusion for people and cars, and I pray that I'm wrong, but it's going to happen. It's going to be a fatality because people don't know how to engineer themselves around the bike paths that end quickly or become shared quickly. It's, it's a conundrum for sure. Maybe this safety program that Ms. Brey brought in today will take a good look at that and wipe that out. I thank the folks, please, all around town. You're not, you're not being a problem by calling us and telling us that you may have a problem. The only way we can fix things is to make people totally aware of them. I thank you for that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Dr. T?
Thank you. So I wanted to start with first, Happy Pride Month. That we understand that pride is, it's not about the parade, it's a history, a long history of resistance and oppression. The Fairness Act is going to be reintroduced. It's come up many, many times in the House and in the Senate, and I want to explain very quickly what the Fairness Act is. The Fairness Act is prohibiting discrimination based on gender identity and orientation. We all have gender identity, we all have orientation. This act would protect a straight white man as much as it would protect a Black trans woman, and we are one of the few states up here, up north, that does not have, that does not have a protection act. So I'm asking that we all call our state reps, that we all call our state senator, and ask them to please support the Fairness Act, because this, it's, it's a shame that we don't have one at this point. In addition, we've got the Home Rule Commission, and those candidates who are considering running for this, the Home Rule Commission, should be active now. And we, as the city leaders, really need to be doing our part to making sure our residents are engaged and they understand what this is and what it is not. This will impact the city for forever, and if we, if we fail to make this a success, we, we put a pause on something that could change the trajectory for at least five years. And so we just need to make sure that we're keeping people aware of the Home Rule Commission, and that those who are interested are asking the questions, and they're preparing for what they need to do to make sure that their candidacy is a success. I'll also ask that all of us who are, who are elected now, and those who are in the administration that we are working with and collaborating with, those who will, who will likely be in office in six months, we're working on plans with millions of dollars that we're either pursuing or that we're allocating, and these plans are going to impact the, those of us who are not going to be here, and then the administration who's not going to be here. But bigger than that, it's going to impact the city, and we need to make sure anybody who's, who's joining at any capacity is, is, is ready to lead the minute that they walk in, and that we're making decisions in collaboration and not just, just on, on certain people who currently occupy seats. We had, to give a quick update on where we are with the zoo, that there is no update. We are waiting for the next meeting to be scheduled with Erie Events, and I do think that we've, the last meeting that we had was incredibly productive, and I'm eager to get to this next stage so that we can keep this moving forward. And that's everything I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doc. Councilman?
As liaison to the Airport Authority, we had a meeting last week. There was discussion around the parking fees. There's free parking there currently, and there's some discussion about adjustments to that because of issues of revenue and whether or not it's worth it. They also introduced a number of interns from really across the nation. It was pretty interesting to see how broad of a pool they had for that. I want to highlight on the agenda today, we allocated this before, but 100,000 to EMS. That was, you know, that's, I think, significant for us to continue to support our emergency services in that way. I want to echo a couple of things that Councilor Titus had said, you know, just continuing to, you know, as the elections are over from the primary, I mean, I truly believe that that this Home Rule Charter is the, is the biggest thing we're voting on this year for to impact our city. So, you know, looking forward to that, and, and hoping that that doesn't get lost in any shuffles or transitions. And as far as contacting some of our delegates about the Fairness Act, it might not do you any good to have me contacting one of them, and we'll end up getting like Facebook posts about it and stuff. So, you know, be mindful as to which ones you, you contact and how. Something a little weird about that. That's all I've got for my report today.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you. So May 28, as Councilmember Schaff mentioned, the Environmental Advisory Council had their meeting at 3:00 p.m., and then on June 2, the Historic Review Commission had its meeting at 1:00. You can re-watch these meetings, they're on Facebook and YouTube. Coming up, we'll have our Zoning Hearing Board meeting on June 10 at 1:00 p.m., and then June 17, we're going to have our Planning Commission meeting at 1:00 p.m. As far as what I attended, I attended the PennDOT's Open House Bayfront Parkway Project, just to find out why they're going to be closing down the bayfront for that portion for up to a year. Unforeseen circumstances underground that they didn't project, more expense to keep it open, they're trying to save money. I was never in favor of this project, so to see the hiccups, I'm not surprised. I felt as though it was rushed, so we're going to go with what we know and see what happens. Luckily, we are able to reroute traffic, it's just it's an inconvenience for the library down there, Dobbins Landing down there, for community to actually access the water, which is my concern. But we're going to continue to grow, and these growing pains are going to continue. I attended the Miller Brother Building Study Session yesterday, we got some updates, we went back and forth, so I'm happy with the results of how that study session went. The RIB Fest was in town last week, I did attend the RIB Fest on Friday. It was a beautiful day, although the rain did kind of try to damper the mood, but it was great, live music, so that kind of helped us weather through it. A colleague and his band, The Breeze Band, was on stage, so I feel like that music alone kept people in the crowd even though it was raining, so that was just nice to see. I'm looking forward to all the community events and the fun the city has planned with our community partners, Erie Events. We have, what is it, the Port Authority with Eight Great Tuesdays, we have the 814 Concert Series, there's lots of things coming up, so I definitely recommend that the community take advantage of the next, what, eight weeks, because it goes fast, and we will be hunkering down for winter, which is unfortunate, but enjoy the time that we have. We have the Sea Wolves in town, so catch a baseball game if you can. And that is all I have to report. I will be in attendance to the Juneteenth event on the 14th, so I look forward to see whoever in the community will be there, along with my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no report about the control. Okay, Jason?
Only a historical note to build on what Mo Troop said. So even though two years after the Emancipation Proclamation, the Civil War settled at Appomattox Courthouse in April of 1865, so you had a full two and a half months before Texas was even told about everything. So just, there's a lag time there, and that's because that was just the Army of Northern Virginia, that wasn't the rest of the Southern Armies, there was continued fighting, because this was not as simple, and that's complex. So, good to know your history.
Thank you. Administration?
Good morning, everyone. Just quickly, we are working on several grants, a number of things have opened up at the federal level that were delayed, that are now coming back online. As was mentioned earlier, we also have the deadline for the U.S. Department of Transportation's Safe Streets and Roads for All Implementation Grant, which is coming up June 26, so we're working on that one as well. We'll be announcing details at tomorrow morning's 10:00 a.m. press conference regarding Lights Over Lake Erie, which will continue again this year on July 3, with fireworks touching off at 10:00 p.m. We will, we are also in the process of finalizing the details for Celebrate Erie, the 814 Concert Series, and Sounds of Summer, and we'll be announcing all of that later this month. As, as you know, the 814 Concert Series happened on the six Sundays between Lights Over Lake Erie and Celebrate Erie, and Sounds of Summer is the six Mondays in between those two events. We also have EMTA, we'll be having their 14th Fest again on June 14. And with, with Pride Month, of course, Pride Day is June 28, that'll be at the Amphitheater at Liberty Park. And with Immigrant Heritage Month, World Refugee Day will be celebrated on June 26 in Perry Square. We're also engaged in the Parks and Rec Plan Outreach right now, that's begun. We'll be sending council additional details and information once the survey is finalized, so that you can get that out to folks. And then the other thing I want to mention is that the photo contest for the 2026 City of Erie Calendar is currently open, and we'll be accepting photos from, submissions from folks until October 10, Friday, October 10. So that gives people all summer to, to capture some, some exciting images of the city, and that's all I have for right now. Thanks.
Attorney Beth?
I have nothing.
Thank you, sir. I would like to ask the Erie Police Department to, and I guess in the mild terms, crack down on the sidewalk parking at 26th and Parade, the east, southeast corner. There's usually two cars parked on the sidewalk, and anyone in a wheelchair would have to go into the street to get to 26th Street. Now, I've spoken with them some time ago, they say, "Well, Mel, we, we give them tickets, and they come down and they pay the ticket." Well, if they have money to pay the ticket and don't care about the law, I suggest that you radio a tow truck and tow them away. Came down this morning, two cars parked on the sidewalk, not halfway on the sidewalk. Okay, thank you. Also, basically for the kids and parents, the Summer Basketball League will not start June 16. I've been informed that the jerseys we order for the kids is sitting in a crate in a dock somewhere. I don't have a direct number to call President Trump, but it's sitting there. So we're going to move it back at least a week, and if we don't have them then, we'll do what we did 35 years ago, we'll play Shirts and Skins, but we'll make sure all the girls are in shirts, on the shirts team, and we're going to move on. We can't let shirts or lack of stop us from having five hours of structure and five hours of kids not getting in trouble. That's more important to me. Here, you know, nothing further, I say this meeting's adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 10:09 a.m. Members Witherspoon, Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop.